Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Rhinebeck Town Board meeting of tonight, October 24th. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okey dokey. I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes of September 26, 2016, for our regular board. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion to accept the October 5 special board minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I don't have any announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements or not?
Nothing yet.
No?
Nothing yet.
Okay. We have a budget public hearing that I'd like to open, and we are going to keep it open. We're going to hold it open until at least our next meeting or when we pass the budget. So if anybody has any comments now on the budget, we will be having a workshop later in the meeting, so we can go to comments then, but the public hearing's open. Also, we have a presentation tonight from our Board of Assessors. Emory Ruger and Bill McCann and Jennifer Munn are here to talk to us about the state's recommendation that we have a townwide reevaluation reassessment. Thanks for coming, guys. If you want to come up, I only have one mic, but you can take it.
You want to move it over here?
Yeah, I guess we should.
I actually can pick up everybody.
You can?
Yeah. As long as they get close to the desk.
Joe is out. He's had health issues, but he'll be okay.
I was hoping he would be here. I'm not going to talk to you.
You can just put it on the desk.
You can be picked up. Just kind of direct your voice in that general.
In that direction. There's not really many people in the audience. There's just one gentleman. I thought we'd have more people here, but that's kind of a good thing.
Well, you know.
For you who don't know me, I think everybody else in the room knows me. I'm Emory Ruger, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, the town and village of Rhinebeck. And we've been talking to the town board in regards to a revaluation. I think it was in July. I wasn't present. We had two people, representatives from the state of New York, come down and explain to you what's going on. The history, I've been the town assessor since 1985, and I've been through two physical revales and came onboard after one revale had occurred back in 1977. In '77, we had one in 1988, and we had one in 2005. And those are the years in which they took place. There's a year or two prior to the revale actually occurring that allows you for data collection, information, and things of that nature to prepare for the reevaluation. And the reevaluation, the purpose and the need for it is that when we slip away from 100% of value, which is based on market value, not construction cost or it's what the house would sell for in today's market, we are slowly slipping away from that 100%. We are currently at 100% in the state whose advisors, because they give us a 5% parameter to work with, and they have advised us that we should start preparing for this. And it shows in our office. We have houses that are assessed for $700,000 and are selling for over $1 million. And this is consistently. Rhinebeck is a very, very strong historical place that people want to come to, and they don't mind spending the extra money for the community that we have, and that's thanks to the board members and town supervisor Elizabeth, who create this atmosphere and allow things like this to occur. It's a very desirable place. Even during the bad times, the market in Rhinebeck stayed very, very strong. And I think it's important that the town board makes this attempt to accomplish this, okay? And what I do in my office, and I've done this for 30 years, is I don't take my personal assessment and my personal property into play. I take the entire community. What's best for the community, okay? It's going to impact everybody. One-third is going to go down, one-third is going to go up, and one-third is going to stay the same. And that's the way it is. And the way it is right now, like it is throughout the country, the people on the bottom are taking the biggest hit. So I think in all fairness to our community, and whatever platform you guys ran on and stand for, I think it's in the town board's best interest to begin the process. And there's no easier way to explain it other than that, and it's going to give us equality throughout the entire town. What we're proposing is to have a company come in and do a total data collection, totally do all of the key punching into the state and county computer, which is an RPS. I think it's version four.
Right now it's version four.
Right now it's running version four, which is what everybody in the state is onboard with now. We are running a program that's called ARS, and we take those figures. And the model was created in 2005, and we take those figures and we apply it to the RPS, but they're not accurate. They're off. And I'm going to admit it. And when somebody builds new construction today, we have to roll back their value as if it were to have occurred in 2005. And that's not fair to the other people in the neighborhood, because they put a 6,000 or 7,000 square foot addition on their house. They're paying taxes based on something that would have occurred in 2005. And everybody knows construction costs in Rhinebeck are high, and the cost of living in Rhinebeck is high. So I think it's in the very, very best interest of the community, the town and the village, that we start the process. And it's not going to cost us a penny to request an RFP. That's a request for proposal, for those who don't know. The state has said that they would work with us in creating that RFP for our specific town and village. And that doesn't cost us anything. So then, then we can send that out to everyone, and we can have a feel for what it is that we're going to be spending out of pocket. And in 2005, when that revale occurred, the last one, I asked the town board to consistently put money aside, because this is going to happen religiously every 10, 11, 12 years. The first one that I am aware of was 1977, then it was 1988. That's 11 years. Then it went from 1988 to 2005. That's 17 years it went without a revale. And people in the community take a hit. They pay more taxes than they're supposed to. And some people, you know, nobody's going to step forward and say, "I'd like to pay more taxes." You agree with me?
Of course.
You know, I think it's just common sense that we do this in the best interest of the public and remove all or any thoughts that we have about our own personal interests of what's going to happen here. I know I'm going to probably take an increase. I don't know what you guys have in the way of property, but you may take an increase. You may take a decrease. It's based on sales. Sales are very strong in Rhinebeck, and they're very hot. And I think it's not fair.
I am a Realtor as well. In my office, we put a listing on this week for $1,002,000. You know what the house assessed at? $380,000.
Great point. Great point. It's sad.
Jennifer's dying.
We, as the assessors, we can't go out on a market sale, just so you know, and raise the assessment. It's based on market value. So theoretically, one would think that, "Well, he sold it for $1,002,000. It's got to be worth $1,002,000, because the state says we have to appraise all properties at fair market value." But one sale is not fair market value. You need three or five to constitute that. So I think that as we slip further and further away from that, it's going to get worse. And it's usually the lower-class people and the middle-class people that take a hit.
More modest houses have higher tax burden. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody else does.
Sure.
When we start losing our 100% valuation, what happens to us besides the lack of parity? Is that really the only thing?
The, I'm going to let Jennifer speak to that in a few minutes. Elizabeth, you want to talk to that now? But the way I understand it is that as you get further away from the 100%, there's a compensation that occurs, usually in small claims or in Article 78s.
So we don't?
That once they slip away from that, so they won't allow us to go to court and say that we're at 100%, so therefore that's what we're achieving.
So we're losing on those?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's any funding available. Jennifer, do you know if there's any state funding available for us now?
There can be up to $5 per parcel.
What do we have, 3,600 parcels?
3,800.
3,800.
3,800.
It can be up to. Now, remember, it's up to, and it depends on who reassesses with us in a given year.
$5 per parcel?
Up to.
But this could cost $50 to $100 a parcel. We could be looking at a quarter of a million to $380,000.
Correct. And, you know, it goes like with everything, with, you know, with all bids. You kind of get what you pay for.
Now, the other thing is, I know the state, when they came, they said you just have to make sure that you do it on the software that we use. So that's one thing we would mandate. But would we still be able to do? I know that Donna goes back and forth between two pieces of software. One, she uses to log in your footprints. Can we, can that be taken?
That's going to be deleted. That will be removed, the ARS program that we used in the 2005. And basically what happened-
Will it be rebuilt on the new program?
The new program's already in place. It's called RPS version four.
But can you get footprints on the new program?
What do you mean, as far as a sketch?
Yeah.
What we have to do is we have to, because it's not based on the sketch, it's based on the sales, the comparable sales. So Jennifer and I have discussed this before. What we're going to do is take a sketch program, independent of itself, create the sketch, and then save it in the county and the state file as a JPEG.
As a PDF or a JPEG.
As a PDF or JPEG, so it can be viewed in that sense.
Got it. Got it.
It has a relationship to the sale, but it's not weighted. The program that we're using now has a weighted value, but it's 2005 is when it was created. So, which was really great when it was done, as you typed in the factors as you were building it, it was factoring in the values, but it was factoring in the 2005 costs.
How long does a townwide reevaluation reassessment take, Emory?
You've got to give it at least one year. So I would say that if we would get an RFP back to us by January, February, and we engage into a contract, it would be all of 2017, and it probably wouldn't take into factor, depending on how busy these companies are, 2018 it would probably go into play, or possibly 2019.
Are you here tonight to ask us to do an RFP?
Well, I think we can do that independently without asking you for that. I mean, it's just, we can do that. But I just want to engage the town board.
I don't know that you can, because it's a contract, and I think we have to approve contracts.
No, it's just a request.
Oh, a proposal.
It's a request for proposals.
You know, I'm in favor.
The contract-
I'm in favor of doing an RFP.
Yeah. A contract is usually a takeoff of an RFP. We're just asking them for information based on a guideline and an outline. Then we can hand that over to you guys, and then you can say, "Let's engage in a contract." And to answer your question, yes, I am here for that purpose. That's step one. That's, you know, and at the bottom of the year, the end of the year, or next year, you say, "Hey, you know, we're not interested. We don't have the money in our budget."
I mean, well, you know, it's something we'll have to look at. Do we exceed the tax cap to do this? Do we bond for it? You know, if the state is coming to us and saying, "There's a problem. The problem's getting worse," I think we're irresponsible if we don't pay attention to it. We know that the tax burden is heaviest on the people with the more modest homes.
Correct.
I think we have to. I think, really, we have to. The question is just, you know.
Yeah. So I mean, that's step one, and I think that that's-
How do you keep it current? How, why do we have to do these every 10, 11 years? How does, is there any way for a town to keep this current? Do we have to keep doing this every 10, 11, 12?
Jennifer can probably speak to that. I can speak to it on one level, but I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Munn.
Thank you.
And do you know everybody on the board?
I do. I do.
Okay. Thank you.
As you know, I'm also a full-time assessor in the town of Floyd.
Yes.
And I maintain 100% equalization rate for the town of Floyd by doing annual reassessment. So, and I've done this for many, many towns while I was liaison for the Office of Real Property Tax Services. Once we have our modules built in RPS, it is work, but it can be done to be maintained every year. So our sales are maintained. Everything's maintained and done in RPS, so you are able to update that every year.
Is this, will this software make it easier to do than what we're doing now?
Absolutely.
Okay. So are you saying if we do an assessment now, we can keep it current?
We can keep it current.
Even with a board of part-time assessors?
Through non-reappraisal reassessment. Now, I believe John Willem talked to us about full reappraisal reassessment, which is with the data collection, which is what we need to do to start. There's no, make no bones about it, that needs to happen in order for us to start. We need to stop using the ARS system, maintain everything in RPS. That is a program that we maintain anyway, just with assessments, for the county to use for the tax rolls. So we're using it anyway. It's something that the county, through the Citrix, I think we pay for anyway, so we may as well use it. It's not like we have to buy a separate package. It's already available to us. As the state moves forward with RPS version five, our role will automatically be converted over to that RPS version five. So it will keep moving forward.
So once one new piece of data is entered, it affects all the existing data in the program, or it looks at it?
So once we build modules, so we can build a cross module, we can build a module for land, we can build models which help us re-predict selling prices and set assessments. And that's the foundation for our comparable sales.
Who builds the models?
The contractor would do it in year one, of course, with oversight by the three of us, probably primarily me, because I have so much experience doing this. And then year after year, the State Office of Real Property Tax Services actually holds classes where you take your role, you go into a class with whatever assessors in the county are doing the non-reappraisal reassessment, and you work on your file, and you work through the county to bring it forward to the next year, so you can do your reassessment. And that's called a non-reappraisal reassessment. So you're able to keep current year after year after year through the non-reappraisal reassessment. You know, every six, 10 years, you do have to go out and do your data collection. But then you can also set up a data collection process so that over the six years, you're going out and doing a portion of the town.
So you're looking at 500 parcels a year?
Once you have it up to date, you then, it's much easier to move it forward. For us to go out and recollect, re-inspect, and remeasure all the parcels in one year, it wouldn't happen.
No, it wouldn't.
And then to value them. So it is easy to maintain. No, I wouldn't say easy. I say that because I've done it so many times that for me, it's second nature. But you are able to maintain it, move forward, year after year. And there is, any assessor can go in and sit with the state during these classes. They hold them at the county information services in order to learn the process. So it's not me, Emory, Bill, whoever's in the office as the assessor can go in and learn how to do this year after year with the state's help. And the state will help you do that, the liaisons.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. This may not even be an intelligent question. What's the relationship between RPS and municity, if any?
Municity is a program that different offices use. I know our building department in Portland uses it. Municity will take an RPS file for current owner information and address information, and then whoever maintains municity will take an RPS copy and upload it to municity, and it'll have their current information on it as far as owners and maybe some inventory. They can't do any assessment work, and I'm not even sure if the assessments are available in municity.
I understand. But there are drawings, and there are site plans in municity, which you were talking about trying to manage.
Yes. I don't, they would have to be JPEGs to be put into RPS. So I don't know that we could, we would have to have access to municity.
Yeah. What we do is-
Which wouldn't, but the assessor's office, give the assessors access to municity. They could go in and look at the plans and drawings themselves, and even print them out, and then move them over to RPS.
Or turn them into JPEGs.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you are going to go out for an RFP with the state?
I, John Willem had called me last week again to offer his services in helping us put together an RFP. He's willing to help us. It's no cost to us to do it. I don't think it could hurt us to see what it costs.
So will you do that and, you know, bring it to us, and we'll, I mean, I don't know that we have to approve it or not, but I'm for it.
I think we would at least sit down with him as we develop it. I can set up-
So you'll start doing it?
Yes, with John.
What is your timeline for having an RFP?
I would like, by the end of November.
Really?
December. He has a template already to, because he just did the RFP for the town of Hyde Park. So he has a template, and that was for a full reassessment, reappraisal reassessment.
Yeah. But tell me, what do they have, 9,000 parcels?
Yeah. John has done many, many, many RFPs, but he would like to find, you know, to come in and sit with us to find out what we specifically want.
Right.
And talk to you to find out, you know, what it is, the direction that the board wants the town going.
And how long do you think it'll take for vendors to respond?
Whatever we set down as a deadline.
Yeah, but what, a couple of weeks, a couple of months?
Couple of weeks.
I would give them 60 days.
60 days, two months?
Okay. So by the end of the year, roughly, we should have-
By the end of the year, I'd say that we should have three propulses in hand.
Okay.
If the town board is, is that your accepted number? Is it three or do you want five?
Well, whoever, I guess whoever responds will-
Yeah, you can't, it's an RFP.
We'll see who responds. But it can't hurt just to have an idea of what we need to do in order to go forward.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I think we should at least know what we're up against, because this will tell us what we're, what kind of costs.
Absolutely.
And what kind of timeframe, right?
And it's just, you know, a couple hours of, you know, working together with the state and really getting the paperwork together. So, you know, a week's worth of time to get an RFP together, certainly not a lot in order for us to move forward.
And it won't be wasted.
Absolutely.
When we get the RFP back, how much time do you guys need for review?
I don't know, like two weeks.
So we get back the end of November, and we turn it over to you by the first of September?
You can look it over. And John Willem will also come up, and he would review the RFPs with you, just to say, not that he would tell you who's better or worse. He wouldn't give an opinion on them, but he would certainly go through them. He would read them. He would say, "I would suggest you get clarification on what they mean when they say this. What is it that their service that they are providing to you if they're saying this?"
Like two board meetings' worth?
So we have a lot of resources available to us-
No, thank you.
-to help us go down the right path.
I think it's reasonable to assume we could do this in two board meetings. One to look at it, one to pass whatever we got to pass.
So we talk at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, and then we just have to figure out how we're financing it.
Well, that'll, we'll do that along, as soon as we know how much we're talking about.
Obviously, we're not exceeding the tax cap this year.
Well, you got the numbers at the end of the year.
Thanks, Emory. Yeah. You know, but maybe we let, we take a loan from the funds and look at, you know, what we're going to do. If it's $250,000, $380,000, I don't think we'll do it.
The last one was $225,000.
And then again, if we get some aid back from the state, that would be, you know, helpful. But again, it's up to $5. They don't make any guarantees on what they're paying.
So it's like $15,000, $20,000 bucks on a $400,000 ticket. Yeah.
Well, I mean, but by $50 a pop.
Five. Five from the state.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. I mean, around numbers, it's $200,000.
Yeah, but it's 50 to 100 per parcel.
I understand. So it's $200,000 to $400,000 we're talking about.
There are certain things, as the assessors, that Jennifer and I and Bill have talked about, that we're going to require in the RFP. And the only way this works is if the contractor takes full responsibility. If they go through the first year of agreements, they go through the-
Got it. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And they stay with us for at least one-
They don't just leave you holding, they don't leave you holding the assessment.
I was doing formal meetings, and they would have to be, be able to defend their values.
Right.
And then, and our job would be to really oversee the project and look at their values and look at their work products that they're giving us and verify them.
I assume we'd have, also have a meeting or two with the public to let them know what's going on and how it's going to be done, and what to look out for, and blah, blah, blah. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. No, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you, Emory.
Bill, do you want to add anything?
No.
All right. Thanks.
Right, good seeing you.
Thank you so very much, and thanks for having us.
We'll look forward to hearing what-
One question I did have. This thing is rather an exceptional service that's going to be done. Does this affect your cap? I mean, it's not like we're doing road work or filling roads or moving roads.
Well, it could affect our cap. We have to decide how we're going to pay for it. If we bond it, if we lend money, if we exceed the cap a little, I don't know, you know. But we're, I think we're not exceeding it this year, and it's premature to say we'd exceed it for this. We don't know what this cost is going to be. So it's something we decide that year.
But it's in the, the money we spend on it winds up being counted as part of the cap, no matter how you do it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming, assessors.
Make sure Joe listens to this. I hope he hears that. Is it anything serious?
No.
No.
Well-
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. See ya.
Any questions? Call.
Will do. Okay, let's see. Any committee or liaison reports?
All's quiet.
Panda, I did not make the panda meeting, so Bill was representing us. He was going to give us a, you know, I'll see if he can reduce this a bit, whatever he wanted to read up on.
Sure.
It's just too much. I didn't get back from the Kipson.
Yeah, no worries. No problem. So I'll reach out to him.
To the assessors.
So, listen, do you have, just get like an example from him, or just get a summary?
Whatever you want to do, if you think he needs to come. Right now, if not, you know, see what you're comfortable with. I just couldn't make it, Elaine. I tried. It was too late.
No, no worries. I understand.
Alan, do you have any updates, any park stuff?
You want me to talk about the park?
Why not?
Okay. So there's been a dispute between the village and the town on the need for water meter pit on the new, the new water system we installed at the park to feed the pavilion, to feed the irrigation of the playing fields when they're built, to feed some fire hydrants we put on, and also the community gardens. And there is an intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town that says that the town is running these, the construction projects, and the town engineers have final say, et cetera, et cetera. And in the meanwhile, the village has said that we need a water meter pit at the entrance to the park, which we objected to because we don't think it's needed. Metering will be done in the branches. They're concerned about backflow, which we've also handled, because our engineer got the design approved by the Dutchess County Department of Health. In any event, we were starting to have meetings about resolving this. And in the middle of trying to schedule meetings-
Who was having meetings? You?
Well, I was having meetings with a representative of the village, and the village lawyer and the town lawyer were meeting together. And in the middle of scheduling all these meetings, what happened was the construction started on the meter pit well within the boundary of the town.
How did that happen?
Of the, wait, well, well within the boundary of the park. I'm not sure how it happened. They didn't, they didn't warn us. They didn't have any, there was no meeting that said we're going to do it anyway. We were acting, and I thought-
You and Warren were meeting with Gary Bassett and the village attorney, and they didn't know that the work was on the park?
They didn't know what was going on. In fact, a stop work order was issued, which they ignored. And apparently, the work was carried out without, the mayor told, from what I hear, the mayor told the crew to keep working without the approval or support of the village board, because the village board member that I was working with wasn't consulted. And we weren't informed. So they went off on their own. Now, if this were a trivial cost, I wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem. But this meter pit is, if you go look at the construction, or involves drilling through rock, they can't blast, because it's where the pipe is already.
So it's estimated.
And, and the, well, it was bid out, and the cost is $65,000 for this meter pit. So we're not talking about a trivial amount of money.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens. I'm not sure we're going to wind up using that pipe anymore.
Well, our stance is that we entered into an intermunicipal agreement. This wasn't in the intermunicipal agreement. Our engineers say we don't need it.
That's correct.
Okay, to be continued. Thanks for calling up on that. Anybody else? Anything? I'll make a motion for resolution, 2016, 231, preliminary- Uh, I'll make a motion for resolution, uh, two thousand sixteen, two thirty-one, preliminary accounts payable abstracts, ten B, forty-four checks totaling sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I have a couple of things. Alan?
Oh.
Um, page two, evolution technologies, uh, there was a ninety thousand dollar invoice that was for maintenance, but it's over budget. I'd like to pull that. And, uh, Richardson, on page three, um, it's incorrect, so I'd like to pull that, he...
Any invoice number?
Invoice, the first invoice number is thirty-eight dash twenty sixteen.
It's only for a hundred and eighty dollars.
What?
I thought you said it was ninety thousand?
Ninety dollars.
Ninety dollars, okay, sorry.
And then, um, invoice S one six oh nine oh five for Richardson, it's incorrect, he has a different hourly rate, a lower hourly, hourly rate than what he billed us for, so there's a, a new invoice, um, so that's, that's, that, those are the only things that I caught. Any, I don't have any questions.
Nope.
Okay, so holding those aside, Richardson, we have a new invoice for, on, uh, anybody else? Any discussion, any questions? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved, so it's a, a amended resolution. I'll make a motion for resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-two, for our capital projects abstracts, two checks totaling four thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor, well, this is the Chuck, this is Crawford for the, oh, yeah, this is for the pavilion, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved. I will make a motion for twenty sixteen, two thirty-three, for our budget transfers and amendments, uh, it is not in the book, it was sent out today.
Yeah.
It's okay, I, 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 did, did, does anybody need a copy? So did you see it in your email today? Um, any discussions? All in favor? Aye, any opposed, so moved. Um, resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-four, I'll look for a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Elaine has the motion, you wanna second it?
Yes.
Okay, Elaine, do you wanna...
Sure, this is the, um, volunteer handbook we talked about, uh, is part of the larger effort to update our policies and procedures, not just for, uh, staff or appointees, but also for volunteers. It's very useful for, for clarity, for understanding the functions and expectations, um, of anybody who's representing the town, whether they're in a volunteer capacity or an appointed capacity.
Great.
So this is the final, this went through a couple of iterations where we all came here and organized and made some changes and, and what, so this is the final iteration, um, so it's ready to go.
Great, thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved. Thanks again, Elaine. Uh, and we'll have, it looks like we'll have a couple of new committees to add to this volunteer, is the next resolution, which I'd like to make a, a motion for resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-five, the formation of building, planning and zoning process review committee, may I have a second?
Second.
This, um, sort of as an adjunct to our zoning review committee, I'd like to form a committee that, uh, is, um, has Michael Tremble, Melanie Moore, Woody Dearze, you know, Melanie and Michael are both former planning board members, Michael served as our interim zoning enforcement officer, Woody is on the planning board, Kathy Hammer, who has been involved in several large store projects, building projects here, so knows how our system works, and Catherine Clark, who's another resident and, uh, an IBM alum who has strong opinions on process or lateral process. So I wanted to form this committee to come to us and give us recommendations how our building, planning and zoning departments work and, and how they work for our residents and what we can do to make it as streamlined and user-friendly as possible, and they're gonna look at everything from the hours that we're open, to the number of hours we have it staffed, to, um, you know, hangups, difficult permitting issues, and if there are any areas of our law that might seem prickly, they're gonna, and then that are really obvious, they can flag that and the zoning review board can look at it. But it's to look at how our process works for our residents and to make sure that it's working as well as it can. We have a very, um, good and a very, um, encompassing zoning law, it's, our comp plan is protecting, uh, Rhinebeck's, um, rural character and, you know, the way it feels, and there are a lot of laws that go with that, but sometimes it can make it difficult for people to get through the process, so we wanna look at that.
Yep.
Guys, I'm bored with that?
Yes, I'm sure, one small thing, just the typo and Alan's name, that's the only thing.
Oh, they always spell my name.
It's possible, two L's, one L.
Two Rs.
Two Rs this time, not too easy. I'm not the, I'm not the, the dry cleaner.
Um, I, this is gonna be a quick committee, hopefully, you know, they'll get it done by the end of the year and it can be, you know, they'll come to us, they're gonna talk to everybody down there, to the planning boards and zoning boards and zoning enforcement officers, code enforcement officers, all the secretaries, and come to us with some, some recommendations and some...
Now, Ed, you said you wanted to be involved as well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you know, no, I, I think I'll bow out if that's okay, and I'll let Ed do it, is that all right? So, um, like to make a motion to re, to, what do I wanna do?
Remove it.
To amend.
To amend, thank you, the resolution. Like to remove my name and add Ed Roberts.
Add, add an R and take away an E.
May I have a second for that?
Second.
Uh, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, amendment passed, all in favor of the resolution forming the building, planning, zoning, re, process review committee, uh...
Aye.
It's a great idea.
Great, thanks.
Now, who's gonna, who's gonna chair and...
They'll decide.
Okay.
Or, you know, see how it goes.
Yeah, of course.
One of them, whoever wants to, how's that?
Um, I'm just thinking that at least one of, one of us ought to call the first meeting and, and let them, well, you think I should?
Definitely.
Okay, sure.
Um, so John, you'll add that committee to this volunteer handbook? Would you please add the new committee to the volunteer?
Am I allowed to?
I think you are.
I just passed the resolution and specifically means...
I'm asking you to amend the committee handbook to, to add our new committee, does anybody have an issue with that?
No, of course.
Thank you.
I think if you amend your, well, okay.
Would you just add the committee to the, to the handbook? Thanks.
I won't say anything.
Yeah.
I think you need more actions for this.
Are you saying that as the clerk or as a lawyer?
Well, I'll propose this later from the floor, then.
But can I, can I, can I ask, 'cause I'm confused by that, only because the, the resolution was just to pass the handbook, that doesn't mean there won't be modifications, I think that there will always be modifications, I don't know that we need a resolution to make necessary modifications. I mean, anytime we lose or gain a committee, we're gonna have to modify the handbook, I don't think we need a resolution, I think it's because it's a new creation that we have a resolution.
Well, well, what we should have done is, is amended...
It just makes sense to me.
We should have amended the resolution that sets up the committee to say, uh, that we're also authorizing the appropriate, the appropriate changes to the handbook.
So I think that, so we could probably just, yeah, like amend the, um...
Let's come back, let's come back to this, to your new business.
In new business, yeah, we'll have a resolution, yeah.
Hash it out.
So in the future, we should do that whenever we create a new committee.
Legislated ourselves into a corner here. Um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion for resolution, resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-six, for our employee health insurance policies, may I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? You guys, um, we, Shelley and I met with, uh, the insurance companies, this is the best plan that matches the plan that we currently have, the union's in favor of it, our employees are fine with it, this is the sort of next year's iteration of the plans that we have.
And it's already budgeted?
Well, we're working on the budget process now.
Oh, yeah, right.
So you're authorizing, you know, this, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any...
Addition, uh, here, is...
Yes. Any, uh, any opposed? And I think, and then I'll sign it, thanks, uh, fine. Um, we have a couple of discussion lines.
Well, you wanted to do this under new business, all right, I have a suggestion, 'cause I was just looking at, you know, we could do, make it easier so we don't go through this in the future, um, I could just change the language to say provides the definition and purpose of the town volunteer committees, and then maybe, I don't know, do you think it's, it's necessary to put in parenthetical enclosure, something like that's distinct and separate from appointees, volunteer appointees, on, on, what's the name for the mandatory committees?
Statutory boards.
Statutory boards, thank you. Do, would that help, would that's more sort of general, is it clear that these are, or do, is anybody a suggestion for different language?
Well, I think the thing that hung us up here is that it names the committees.
Exactly, that's my point, that's why if I crossed out the committees and replaced it with just town volunteer committees, it's more broad.
And then we can add as, I'm fine with that, John.
Okay.
Okay.
You wanna make a motion for a resolution?
Motion.
Yeah, what, we're making a...
I think you can amend this.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's make a motion to amend resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-four, may I have a second?
Second.
We're looking at amending, it's two thirty-four, the employee hand, volunteers.
On the stat boards.
The, um, third paragraph, whereas the attached volunteer handbook handbook provides the definition and purpose of the town committees, we could...
And then just cross off the word on from on aging all the way down to, uh, Mazzarella Park, and then it can keep the parenthetic closure, this is collectively the committees, 'cause it's referred to below as the committees, but I would just, um, take an asterisk and put the word volunteer in between town and committees, just before all the naming of the committees.
I would also add in the resolved, after, uh, distribute the handbook to all existing commit, members of the committees, update the handbook with new committees.
Yep, good call, update.
Okay.
And ensure that all newly appointed members to the committees receive the handbook as the official...
Or actually, what you might want is update the handbook with any changes or additions to committees in case...
It's fine, good.
Good.
Got that, John? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved, solved that problem. So now we can add the building, planning and zoning process review committee.
Cool.
Um, I'm gonna flip this around because we're going to do the budget, I would like to, uh...
You wanna do these two?
Two new business items?
Resolution, uh, twenty sixteen, two thirty-seven, hiring temporary clerk to the zoning board of appeals, may I have a, a motion and a second?
Well...
Motion, Ed?
Second.
Okay, you wanna, um, sure.
Our work to the zoning board, because of other duties she has and other jobs, she has to lead, so in the interim, we totally find a zoning for clerk, we had a couple applications, but Brandon Kearney has decided he'd be very willing to help out on a temporary basis, so, uh, he's gonna take the job temporarily, we finally appoint a new zoning board clerk.
Great, now she's done this before, and so she knows the job, and she actually fills in another temporary position, so it's, it's great to have her, she does special projects for us and she knows a lot of different departments, so, great, thanks. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved. Uh, resolution twenty sixteen, two thirty-eight, replacement of a highway pickup truck in Snowplow, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, um, this is from Barry, he's looking to, um, replace, uh, a truck that they have and use some of the fu, fund money, um, Joe's gone over this with him, it was on our last agenda, we tabled it so that we could, Joe could review it, and I think everyone's on board.
Right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved. Um, I think we'll table setting up the workshop date for proposed workshop housing law, I don't know when Joe's available. Let's get through our budget and let's get through the personnel stuff that we're doing with Richardson, does that sound good?
Sure.
Um, workplace and the violence committee, um, we have mandatory, state mandated, uh, workplace and violence in the workplace training, Joan went and received the training, she is going to have it here at town hall for all of us, um, I forget the date, but...
Remember for a second.
There you go. Um, everyone will get another email and, um, one of the things that they...
Should we?
We'll get an email, one of the, one of the things they recommended is that we have an incident review committee, and that committee would have to review any violence, um, incidents that we got in a timely fashion and make a recommendation. So I guess I'd like to make a motion to form this committee, I reached out to Peter Dunn, who's a town resident, he'd be happy to serve on it, Henry Campbell, who's our emergency services guy, will do it, and, um, I think we should put Joan Winnie on it, who's our clerk, uh, and, you know, a resident, um, just in the beginning, and they'll look for some new members, uh, but it'll be maybe five members.
Right.
Does that sound good for you?
Yeah.
I make a motion to form the, uh, incident review committee, um, per our state mandated violence in the workplace, uh, consisting of Peter Dunn, Henry Campbell and Joan Winnie, may I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved. Um, workshop on the twenty seventeen budget.
I think it would be good to, um, adjourn the budget public hearing now, uh, to November fourteenth, your next town board meeting.
Okay.
And we're, we're keeping it open, but the internet's done.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our public hearing to our next meeting on November fourteenth?
Yeah, November fourteenth is the next town board meeting, you have until, I believe, the fifteenth to pass the budget.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll pass it on the fourteenth, but what if we have other budget meetings and...
Well, you can have budget workshops as much as you want, but the next time...
We have a public hearing, it'll be on the fourteenth.
Got it.
So we'll adjourn it until the fourteenth. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, so moved, thanks, John. Okay, um, do you guys want me to just go over what I did from our last?
Sure.
You did?
Yeah.
Do you, um, let me see, I'm missing my, um-
Page. You want that page?
No, I've got it. I've got the preliminary. Okay. So what we did here is, um, we took our liability insurance and moved it into the general fund. I talked to the office of the State Controller. We can split it up. We can't split it up the way that we did it. What we have to do is have our insurance go through and cost out everything that's part town, which is really our highway equipment, and put it in the highway part town. So we should park it in general fund until we do that. We can't split up a portion of the monies between the two and say that's how our insurance breaks. Uh, it's a general fund item. If we are going to split it, we have to have a separate insurance code. So I, um, per our last meeting, moved it all into there. Um, I reduced a couple of things for, um, you guys asked me to reduce the court dues, miles, and schools. Uh, tax collector contracts went down. Uh, buildings maintenance went up $250. Central maintenance went up $1,000 for the equipment replaried at Bobby's truck. The vital registrations, um, fee that showed lower. Our deputy clerk has not collected her 2015 stipend. Shelley has to review that and then get in touch with her and figure out when she wants to collect it. So it showed less money in that because Joan had not collected her stipend. Um, we upped the playground supplies a little bit. The labor is all, um, correctly budgeted now. We have the seasonal, uh, full-time seasonal worker in at, uh, a total of, um, 880 hours over 22 weeks. 264 hours here at Town Hall, uh, 352 hours at the cemetery, and 364 hours at the playground. And that's at the rate of $15.86. The rate went down. I made a mistake in the rate. We also clarified the, uh, additional three days for 14 weeks that we used to help mowing the fields in the summer. So that's an additional 384 hours, three days a week for 16 weeks at $14.25 an hour. That rate is lower. That's what we're paying. Um, so that's been corrected. Pool equipment went up, I don't know, $340. I did not do anything with Rhinebeck Day, Elaine, because I looked at the tenures that we did it. It was always a revenue-neutral, uh, event. So if we bid money, we got money in for it. We sold T-shirts one year. We rented tables. So I don't know what you want to do about it. Think about it. We could deal with it at our next meeting. I brought the well testing on our landfill back down to this year's rate because we have not been asked for an increase. And I'm going to ask Joe, since that's his department, to call the engineering firm and maybe even bid it out again to see if we can't find it for a little less. It's $6,700 a year. So maybe we can do a little better than that. So that's something that I'll ask him to do. Secretary to the Zoning Administrator, uh, we reduced to five hours a week at $13.50 an hour. And what I'm thinking is that that could be additional hours for the clerk to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, we haven't decided if we're funding these extra positions in part-town zoning, building, planning, and zoning yet, but it's in there. And so in here is the deputy, deputy zoning administrator, 12 hours at $23 an hour. I've been working with civil service on the job title and clarification. I think I sent you guys all out something that I received from her. We could look at that. Um, we have the zoning review, uh, the zoning process committee looking at this. If we decide not to do it, we can put it in contingency. We can move it before we amend the budget. It's there for now.
Right.
We see that there's a need in our zoning department, and this is how we're addressing it.
Zoning Board of Appeals. What exactly is the 1500?
I'm sorry? I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh. This is the wrong notes. This is from my tentative budget. I've already been changed to that.
Oh.
That's okay. Um, let me look at, these are my, uh, tentative budget notes. I put in a zoning board of appeals secretary at 14 hours a week. There's a page break issue there. The 1500 is for planners' ease.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but we've already gone beyond that. We've already, this budget has changed the 14 to 20 hours, so it's already one thing, but, um, no, that's good. Thanks for reading it. The employee benefits line that was up 157% is not up 157%. It's a reallocation of part-town labor. Uh, we have three employees who opted into the retirement system, our zoning administrator, our planning board secretary, and our, uh, secretary to the ZEO. So it was a reallocation, um, of retirement benefits. Highway equipment from $70,000 to $60,000. There were a lot of emails going around about a state law that says that you cannot put anything over $60,000 a year in highway equipment that you get from taxes. I talked to the controller about it. My point is that it's not coming from taxes. It's coming from funds balance, and we're selling equipment. I think the law is there so that if you don't have anything else, you can't just hoard money for highway equipment. But one can make the case that we're getting the money from fees, from sales tax revenue. It's not all from tax revenue, so it's a very loophole-y law.
It sounds like it.
So, yeah. Joe's point is that we've only ever done that, and I'm like, hey, it's a new board. So I've lowered it to $60,000. Barry asked for 70. I don't know what you want to do.
Did Barry say what he was gonna do with the question, right? He wasn't sure what the $10,000 difference was? He wasn't sure why he requested something?
Yes, and I just don't have the, I can bring that to our-
Why don't we, hold up.
No, what I'm saying is that we don't, it, the law says that you cannot put any 60, over $60,000 that you're going to raise in tax revenue. And my point is that it's not coming from tax revenue. It's coming from our sales tax fees. Who's to say where the money comes from? So, uh-
It's kind of a fine point.
It is, it is. And they agreed that it-
Okay. I mean, sales tax revenue is tax revenue and fund balance.
Property tax. This law specifically says tax levy.
Okay.
For property taxes.
Got it. Okay.
I lowered it to the 60,000 that you guys asked me to. I don't, I didn't know if the majority wanted it lowered or not. Joe was adamant about lowering it. It's lowered.
And I could tell you he still is.
He's only one out of five.
I know. I'm just, I just thought you'd like to know.
He's only one of five. Heavens forbid. We, we pay for infrastructure replacement. But, um, the other question was, uh, in revenues. We had less money in from pilot, and yes, we do. We had less money this year in on the pilot for the Baptist home, because that's what a pilot is. It goes down after a year, so.
Right.
The CFO fees for the planning, zoning boards were increased from $16,000 to $27,950. They were just broken out. If you look at your budget, uh, there's a $16,000 line. And then this year, we broke it out because we looked at where the revenues actually came from. It was $3,000 in planning board fees, $12,000 in site plan, $7,300 in special use permit, $500 in subdivision, $4,900 in wetland, and $215 in sketch plans. I upped revenue in building permits. I upped that $3,000. I upped the CFOs and the CFCs $2,000. I upped swim team a little bit, $500, and I upped the playground and camp, uh, summer camp, $2,000. I figured that there were quite a few people who got the resident break this year that should not get it, and we have to be very clear on that.
Right.
It's not hard to do that.
Yes. Okay.
The zoning secretary.
Yes.
Could you give me, I didn't believe you'd be coming on Thursday, but I saw up to exactly the hours you might have to work. I know the pay isn't, can you?
Uh, we haven't approved a salary schedule. It, we're looking at, I think, 14, 13 to 15?
Hours?
Hours, plus if we approve an additional five to help the, the zoning administrator.
Below 20?
Uh, it has to be below 20, so I would say 17 to, uh, 19, 17 to 20.
Hours?
Yeah. Maybe as low as, say, 14 is enough. We don't know. We don't know.
The hourly rate is what?
I believe it's 13.50.
Okay.
Now, this brings us under the tax cap by about, um, I don't know, 10, $14,000. So we can look at our health insurance issues and our salaried parity with this. Do you guys have any other changes you want to make?
Not at the moment.
Do you want to stick to our schedule and come back and go over this? Is it tomorrow night or the night after?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night? So we'll stick to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a, uh, just so you know, we have a Wednesday night Recreation Advisory Committee meeting in which we're gonna interview five, count them, applicants for the, uh, recreation director job.
I also want the RECK committee to tell us what this $5,000 for the elderwise program is.
I promise I'll buy the-
And if they should come to that, you know, Wednesday budget meeting.
Okay.
If, you know, we're going to be funding this, it's for Rhinebeck residents, not for non, you know, we have to-
Sure. I'll have, I'll talk to Joe.
Do they need all the money? What, you know, what, so there's a placeholder there.
Our meeting is at 6:00.
What time is our budget meeting?
5:00, sorry.
5:00?
Our meeting is at 5:00.
Oh, nice.
5:00 PM, yeah, and the, and the, the committee meeting is at 7:00.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm hoping we'll get is having one or two-
Can we have one conversation, one conversation? Sorry.
I'm hoping that the RECK committee will recommend one or two people are out of the list, and then we can, we can pick as the board, 'cause we're the ones that appoint the rector.
I also want them to look at, you know, the, our, our budget. Are we, you have to start getting involved with that.
I'll bring that to their attention.
All right, that, that's, uh, what's my, I just put it away, as if we're leaving. Um, I think I did all the changes. Anybody have anything else? Uh, we did get a letter from, uh, our Town Hall employees asking to consider a policy change regarding the non-union contribution to medical insurance. Uh, so that's something we can talk about. I know you guys all have that. Alan and I are going to be negotiating the contract for the highway, uh, new highway contract. And they've given us dates of the 7th and 8th to meet with us to let us know what all their requests are.
7th and 8th of November.
Yeah. 8th is election day. What, do either of those work for you?
Let me look.
And I mean, I think the first one can just be like a listening meeting for us to listen, and then we can bring it back to you in executive session and decide how you want to proceed.
Yeah, the 7th is good for me. The 8th, I have to go down to New York City. I have a procedure the next day.
You voting?
Oh, yeah. I'll vote, and then I'm going-
All right, just checking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Checking.
As many times as I can.
Just once. I only once.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make sure that Michael can meet the, make the meeting on the 7th. If he can't, maybe we should do it without him, because I think it's a listening meeting for us to hear what they want.
Sure.
Correct, or do you disagree?
No, I agree with him. Hopefully, their, their input will be concise, so we can communicate.
Anything else? Oh, uh, one, um, one other thing. I'm sorry, you know, uh, highway superintendent requested extra hours for his secretary within the pay period to go over the budget book that he has. I think she's only approved for 40 hours pay period. Can we talk about a resolution to let her exceed it for a pay period or not at his discretion to get this project in order that he wants? Does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
I'd like to make a, uh, motion for a resolution to allow, uh, Sophie Clark, secretary to the highway department, to exceed her 40 hours a week pay period at the highway superintendent's discretion not to exceed, I think it's an additional 10 hours pay period for two pay periods? Is that all right? 20 hours for the project? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. So you'll let, we let Barry know that we approved that, John? 10. Okay. Does anybody else have any new business or any other? Uh, Joel, you've got your three minutes of fame.
Down to 15 minutes. We're giving you your 15 minutes, three minutes at a time.
Oh, no. No paper for me. I thought you were going green. Take this back.
And you all people have to be going green.
Yeah, this is, this is the worst. You're, you're-
And, and you didn't print it on both sides?
It's not even on two sides. Blue hiss. That's fine.
Some, some people need to see that paper.
All right, Joel, go ahead.
So the, the two pieces of paper, one is about the Repair Cafe. We're doing our 15th Repair Cafe here at Rhinebeck Town Hall. It's gonna be one week from Saturday, November 5th, from noon to 4:00 PM. Uh, Town Highway Superintendent Barry Sherab, Eric Blum, Sarah Stevens, Amy Smith, Valerie Legge, who's a licensed massage therapist, free massages, Chris Ham with his homemade 3D printer, Vince Murray doing welding out there at the back door. Lamps, vacuum cleaners, bikes, clothing, computers, electronics, welding, you name it. Bring it. That's Saturday, November 5th, noon to 4:00 PM here. If you go to repaircafehv.org, it's spread all over Hudson Valley. I, I, I think maybe one of the most important things that the town board considers is what's gonna be the town budget, obviously, in Rhinebeck for 2017. One of the most important things that I, as a county legislator, have to try to have an impact on is what's the county budget gonna be for 2017. This Thursday, the county executive at 4:30, I'm gonna be there in the legislature's chambers. He's gonna be presenting his proposed budget for 2017. The, I'm, I'm hoping that because of the $57 million fund balance, which is about 200, literally 250% more than what it was for a couple decades.
Where did it come from?
Where do you think it came from?
I'm asking you.
I believe that a lot of it came from the hides of these towns, cities, and villages.
The, the, the sales tax capping?
The city of Poughkeepsie has lost-
There were a lot of, there were a lot of personnel changes, a lot of early retirements, a lot of, right?
Yeah.
So that saved a lot of money.
Yeah, but, uh, the city of Poughkeepsie alone has lost about $2.2 million a year for the last three or four years. I, I don't get the impression, you know, I get the impression that there's a little bit of austerity on the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Clinton and the village of Rhinebeck. I'm not attacking. What I'm saying is, the reason why there's so little money is because, uh, there's been, there's been a big shift over the last several years as far as the county sales tax revenue.
Well, we've lost almost $50,000 a year. We've been very vocal. I've been vocal about it. We passed a resolution against it. We have to move on, you know, yeah. It, this, this tax plan is in place for another seven years, so.
Well, it's interesting, 'cause there's more and more elected officials, um, of my persuasion and of the other side of the aisle who are kind of getting more increasingly riled up about it. So, who knows? Hope springs eternal. Um, but, you know, the things that we've lost over the last decade, we used to have a five-day week for the county office for the aging senior friendship centers. We used to have a county senior home care program in the health department. We used to have an elder abuse program in the mediation center of Dutchess County. Uh, we used to, on April 1st this year, the sexual assault forensic examiner program was eliminated. There are women who have been raped, who have been sexually assaulted, who have been sitting in local hospitals, sometimes two, three, four hours, waiting to be seen. And sometimes they're just, to heck with this, and they go home. Uh, there, there's some incredible things that should, used to be in the county budget that aren't. The domestic abuse response team does not cover Rhinebeck or Clinton. It only covers Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Hyde Park.
So why do we pay for it? Why are we taxed for it?
That's a good point.
Can you find, you find out for us. You're our county representative.
I've been advocating for a decade. A decade ago, I think it was only Poughkeepsie and Beacon.
I mean, what do our, you know, what do our, our town residents pay, what, about $3, $3.40? That's the mill rate for the county taxes. What does that get them? What do we get for that? We get support with county planning. We get, um-
Well, we get Joel.
With our assess, what do we get? What services are we getting here from the county?
I, I totally agree. I totally agree. And, and domestic violence is a big issue. It's not just in Poughkeepsie, Beacon, or Hyde Park. Domestic violence is, I've seen the reports from Butch Anderson's office, the sheriff's department. Domestic violence is a huge issue in Clinton, in Rhinebeck, all over, and that the county's domestic-
We see it on our police report every month.
Yep.
And the domestic abuse response team does not cover Rhinebeck or Clinton. The county budget used to have Big Brothers, Big Sisters in the county budget, the Youth Bureau Project Return Program, Green Team Community Gardening. And, uh, for Poughkeepsie, I'll just say one other thing. You go to westchesterpower.org. I, I've been talking about community choice irrigation for a while. These eight women from Rosendale, citizensforlocaispower.com. The Poughkeepsie Journal had a huge article this year about Westchester Smart Power. Westchesterpower.org, they're doing it. And this is a no-brainer. This should be in the county budget for 2017 to help Rhinebeck businesses, homeowners, save money on electric bills, locally generate the clean, green energy. Go to westchesterpower.org. They're doing it. In community, very briefly, community choice irrigation is, you choose where you get the electricity, the energy from. It's delivered along the local utilities lines. I remain at 464-2245, 876-2488. I'm gonna be doing local, uh, county budget forums here at Rhinebeck Town Hall on, um, what is it, the 22nd and the 29th of November at 5:30 PM. And you can speak up about the county budget and the crazy county sales tax revenue sharing formula on November 3rd, December 5th, and December 8th at 7:00 PM at the county office building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Joel.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody? Let's make a motion to adjourn. Good night, everybody. Thanks.